You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Good evening, everyone. The meeting, the June 11th meeting of the Branford RTM is called to order at 8:02 PM. Please let us rise for the pledge.
I apologize, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is since one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Toohill, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Moderator. Representative Adams. Representative Edelman.
Here.
Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Amore.
Here.
Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Here.
Representative Brooks.
Present.
Representative Dayhill.
Here.
Representative Everson.
Here.
Representative Greenberg.
Absent.
Representative Hartwell.
Here.
Representative Henshaw.
Here.
Representative Heinz.
Here.
Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Keefe.
Absent.
Representative Leach.
Here.
Representative Larson.
Right.
Representative LaFredo.
Absent.
Representative Mareska.
Here.
Representative McCall.
Here.
Representative McCormick.
Absent.
Representative Nuppani.
Absent.
Representative Papalizio.
I'm here, Frank.
Thank you. Representative Sharkey.
Absent.
Representative Shrestha.
Here.
Representative Sumro.
Absent.
Representative Toohill.
Here.
Representative Verderen.
Here.
And Representative Waterman.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Toohill.
You're welcome.
Okay, item three on the agenda, approval of the published--
Excuse me, Madam Moderator.
Oh, yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but--
Go ahead.
--I have to, I have to observe that we have an ex officio on hand. Our town clerk was with us tonight, Lisa Arpin. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa.
Excuse me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item three, approval of the minutes of the annual budget meeting held on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. All in favor, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Submissed.
And we have a second with Representative Leach. Representative Everson.
Everson, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a second. Any, any discussion, corrections offered towards the minutes of the May 13th annual budget meeting? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Reception of communications, I have not been in receipt of any petitions or communications or other correspondence. Mr. Toohill, have you received any?
I have not, Madam Moderator.
Okay, thank you. Then we're moving on. Item five, to consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request from the inland wetlands director to approve a tran, to approve the request for fiscal 25 for the following: From overtime $250 to longevity $250. This was heard by, or is this going to be, are we going to hear this on the floor?
I make a motion that we 441 this item.
Okay, so we have a motion to suspend Rule 441 and discuss it in the meeting tonight. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Hartwell, any discussion on suspending Rule 441 for this item? Okay, hearing none, can we have a vote on the suspension? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No? Okay, who will present? Inland Wetlands? Ah, Josh.
I'll present. As read, I make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this transfer from overtime to longevity for the inland wetlands director.
Black raised his hand.
Oh, we have a second, okay. We have a second. Any, any discussion on the motion to approve this transfer? Questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll have a vote, all in favor of the transfer.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the transfer is approved. Item six, to consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request from Willoughby Wallace Memorial Library for the, for fiscal 25, from contingency $14,000 to library staff and communications for an equivalent amount of $14,000. I believe this was heard in admin services.
Ways and Means.
Oh, Ways and Means. Contingency, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm a little, it looks like we have one set of microphones tonight.
Yeah, okay.
So hopefully this will do for both. So Ways and Means met on last Wednesday and we voted, we, we heard from the director of the Willoughby Wallace Library, Lynn Sullivan, and she explained that last fall she had decided that the library needed to be staffed at all times by two people. It's a security issue. She went to the administration, she talked to the administration, they agreed that that should happen, but they forewarned her that the amount of money she had in the budget was not going to cover the complete year. And in fact, that's what happened. She came to us and said she needed some money primarily to go into the salary line so that they could pay the staff through the 30th of June. And she also let us know that in the budget for next year, we have already approved enough money in the library budget for this level of staffing going forward, so this is simply a makeup to cover a short time thing. We had four members of the committee there that night, and the motion was approved by a unanimous vote, and since we did this on Zoom, it was done on a roll call vote. So we did approve this for nothing, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. Are there, is there any discussion or questions or comments regarding this transfer?
Right here.
Mr. Hartwell. Excuse me, this is Madam Moderator. Thank you very much.
Representative--
Coming, going forward next year, this money has already been allocated, so we won't have to go into contingency next year to make this up.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, then we'll have a vote. All in favor of this transfer of $14,000 for the Willoughby Wallace Memorial Library, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Thanks very much. Item seven, to consider and if appropriate, establish a harbor management commission pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section 22A through 113K. Representative Henshaw, I believe this is your baby.
Yep, thank you, Madam Moderator. For convenience, I'd like to sit because the microphones are down low and I have a little bit to read here. The Rules and Ordinance Committee held a special meeting on June 2nd to consider the final draft of the, this proposed ordinance. In that meeting, we reviewed the ordinance pretty much line by line in detail, discussed changes, some changes that had been made, et cetera, and after that process, the committee voted unanimously to approve sending this, this ordinance as a proposal to the full RTM. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion. However, before we go on to, to discuss the motion, I, I think it would be probably helpful to the, maybe people listening in on our, our meeting tonight to give a little bit of background about the ordinance, what it's, what it's about, what the process we followed to develop it, et cetera. So I'll read that or discuss that first, and then we can go on to discuss the ordinance itself. So a little bit about the, the initiation of this, in, in April of 2004, First Selectment Cosgrove requested that the RTM consider an ordinance establishing a harbor management commission as allowed by state statute. As a matter of reference, Connecticut has, I think, 24 towns that bordered our coastline, the Long Island Sound. Of those 16 already have adopted commissions or have established commissions, and I believe another five or six, including Branford, are currently considering it. So if anything, we're a little bit late to the game here, but I think it, it is a statement that establishing these commissions seems to be a prudent thing as, as the First Selectmen has requested. A little bit about the process that the committee followed in, in developing this. The rules and ordinance followed recent protocol by establishing a working group from both parties to redo research on the request and draft a proposed ordinance. Dan Edelman and Chris Heinz were on this working group, and I'd like to especially thank them tonight for the work that was done over the past year on this, this pretty complex ordinance. The RNO during that time took concerted steps to encourage the involvement of key stakeholders from Branford in the committee's deliberations. Additionally, meetings were held with First Selectmen Cosgrove and Branford's harbor master, Vinnie Supa, among other people. We also benefited tremendously from a pro bono review of the draft by attorney John Casey of Robinson &amp; Cold, who is an expert in this field, and gave us very helpful comments on our draft and allowed the working group to make, make changes accordingly, which I think make it a, a much better ordinance. It has also been, the final draft, as you see it tonight, has been reviewed by town attorney Anis Kovich, and his comments, which were relatively few, have been taken into account also in the, the proposal that you have in front of you. In terms of the impact of this ordinance, a key task of Branford's Harbor Management Commission will be to create a Branford Harbor Management Plan. Currently, for those of you may not be familiar with processing coastal projects, any proposed coastal activity currently must go through a review process that involves Connecticut Deep, the Corps of Engineers, and I believe the Connecticut Department of Agriculture. And their review is a reviewing Branford's coastal plans is based on, basically generalized statewide standards that they've created with nothing specific to our community itself. Once a Branford Harbor Management Plan has been adopted and approved, as this commission will be empowered to do, those agencies' reviews in the future will be based upon standards that are specifically tailored to the needs and desires of our town. So there, there's a very concerted benefit, I think, to the town in, in having the commission and having the commission develop a plan. There are some costs, I think we, we have to acknowledge in developing, having a commission enacted. Maintaining a harbor management commission will involve some initial expenses in the professional consultant needed to draft the plan, followed by some ongoing expenses in the management of the plan itself. The ongoing expenses would most likely continue annually and might taper off over time. However, once a plan is enacted, the town will be able to receive some offsetting income in the form of fees for things like moorings that would be stipulated through the Harbor Management Plan once it's enacted. And I would also say that those have to be reviewed and approved by the, the RTM. Some of the key elements that we, we, the working group, put into this, this ordinance, which were not required through the state statute, were to ensure that our key coastal stakeholders, number one, are represented on the commission, and that the commission's development of the Harbor Management Plan will be led by a professional consultant, which is not a requirement of the state, and that those, that development process will include a series of public hearings involving both the community and the key stakeholders in, in the community. So those were, were things that we added on that we felt would, would enhance the, both the commission and the ongoing process that the commission would follow for the town of Branford. So that, that's a bit of an overview of it. After we go on to discussion, I do have three grammatical corrections, which I will list at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a committee report on, on this? Is there a vote in committee?
Yes, I said that at the beginning.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry.
The committee met as a special meeting--
Okay.
--and reviewed the plan in detail and voted after that review and discussion unanimously to send it to the RTM.
That's fine, okay. So we'll open the floor to questions and discussions, since we have a committee report for an approval of this ordinance. Questions, comments? Representative Everson.
Thank you. I just want to commend the committee, Chairman Henshaw, and Representative Edelman, and Representative Heinz for working a bipartisan way. This was initiated by the administration, and this RTM has worked diligently on it for quite a long time. And I think it's very thoughtful and provides the town a wonderful structure that is needed that will give us more of a say of what happens on our own shoreline, and I think it will benefit our town tremendously. Thank you.
Representative Henshaw.
Yes, in the form of an amendment, as we go on through this discussion, I'd like to propose three corrections, and you all have numbered pages in front of you. The first correction is on page four, line 25. That needs to assert the word "to" in the phrase "other facilities appertinent to the Branford Harbor Management area." So the addition is the word "to." That's the first correction. The second correction is on page five, line 11, and the change is to the word "shall," and we're proposing to change that to the word "may," and that aligns with the state statute, which, that's page, page five, line 11. Page four was line 25.
25.
Yeah, I already put it in.
"Shall" is already in there.
No, you turned it to "may."
No, it is "shall," we're changing it to "may."
Changed it to "may."
Oh, that's opposite.
Changing the word "shall" to "may." I thought it was the other way around. No. It's "shall" in the version that we, the RNO proposed, and we're changing it through amendment to "may." Okay. And that, as I say, that was, that's the wording that's in the state statute at this time, and this was brought to my attention specifically by the town engineer, who was concerned about the review of some land side activities--
Shallamar.
--and whether or not this, this requirement as a "shall" by the Harbor Management Commission would slow down that process unnecessarily. So we, we agreed with him, and again, we look back at the state statute, which does use the word "may," and felt that that was the appropriate change to make. The last change is on page three, line 31. It says, "Formal approval per section five point, or five period A, section, or line four of this ordinance." What that should read is "formal adoption per section five point C, seven of this ordinance." So that was a correct reference point. So those are three changes that we'd like to make. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, if somebody can second it and we can discuss that.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, Frank?
Yeah.
We have a, a motion to approve those Scrivener changes, and we have a second. Who is the second?
Me.
John Hart, Representative Hartwell.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any discussions on these three changes? Okay? Questions? All right, all in favor of approving the changes to the wording in, the grammatical wording in the, in the ordinance? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, those changes are approved. Other, yes. Yes.
Lisa, I can, I can give him to you written.
We will, okay. Other, from the RTM, other questions, comments regarding the development of and wording of the ordinance, the harbor man, that creates a Harbor Management Commission? Any questions from the public? Yes. Come on, come on forward, please, and identify yourself. Yeah, right here.
To the microphone and just identify yourself.
Vinnie Supa, I'm the current harbor master. Thank you all for being here. This has been a long, arduous process, and I want to thank Peter and Chris and everyone who was involved, and Dan, for getting this through. My first question is, what will the transition look like from the Harbor Commission, you know, from my current, you know, oversight to the Harbor Commission? When will that take place? How will that take place? When are we looking to get a new harbor master? Stuff like that. Is it too early?
I can say that the, the transition from where we are today to your new modified role as harbor master, working with a commission, would take place after the Harbor Management Plan has been written up, developed, approved by the, the state, and adopted by the town, at which point that becomes enacted. And I can't give you a timeline on, on that, but, but that would be the point at which your relationship would, would now be one that included a Harbor Management Commission. Exactly how that, that relationship is developed, I think, part of it's in the state statute for your, your job, and part of it would have to do with the plan itself and the various roles.
Yeah, the only thing that concerns me is, I think there's some intricacies between how the way I kind of manage things now, which is kind of one-man show, and like, as you're building the Harbor Management Plan, I think there's some things that need to be worked in that I just feel like, so far, I haven't really had much of a say with the small working group, that I think would be pretty valuable. I'm just wondering how and when you're going to begin to make that plan, how I'm going to just get a little bit more, you know, how that's going to happen, when that will be made.
I think that, Dan, do you want to-- Well, then, we're establishing the, if this passes--
No, I understand.
--we're establishing the commission, which then formulates the plan. We're not formulating the plan itself here, we're just establishing an enabling authority of the commission to itself establish the plan.
Totally.
So I believe that your input and role would be after that plan has established the rules and regulations of, of, of the input and how they're going to, how the commission's going to set up the plan, rather, that's when your input would be.
More or less, but I, I understand that.
Vin, I think--
How and when.
Just to amend that, I think that, to address your concern, you could probably, once the commission has been established, once the Board of Selectmen is, is nominated and, and selected the, the seven members of the commission, and their task to develop the plan begins, right, I think right at that point, at the beginning, you could, you're an ex officio of the commission--
Totally.
--and as such, at the beginning, you could discuss with the commission the, the sort of dilemma you have on transitioning, even though they really won't have too much authority to act until a plan has been actually developed and approved. But you could start the conversation, I think, early.
Yeah, totally. I think there's maybe some things I'll shoot you an email about, just like, for example, I don't think I'm going to be the acting harbor master, that's something I've kind of addressed, but I'd like to maybe have a seat on the commission, just so I can ensure there's a smooth transition. Because currently, I'm putting out harbor master, I'm, I'm the current harbor master, putting out mooring permits for this year. It's a arduous process, I do it by myself, ton of paperwork. I have like files at my house, filing cabinet, so on, so forth. I just want to make sure that that's transferred to your guys' hands properly. I'm busy enough, I don't really have time to do this anymore, to be quite frank, so I'm just here letting you guys know that. Anytime you actually get this set, so that would be at, what, the next Board of Selectmen meeting? They would pick the seven board members?
Well, I doubt that it's going to happen in the next meeting, that's up to the administration.
Like, how long? I'm just curious how long.
I don't think we can give you a definite-- I would imagine in the next--
Months?
It's a matter of months.
Really?
A matter of months. You'll be married by then. Yeah.
Okay, that's all. No. Because when we started this, it was like, this will be a year, and that was like two and a half years ago.
Yeah.
So I'm not trying to like--
It's a year and a half ago. The other thing, though, is--
No.
--if you're not planning to continue as the harbor master, then--
No, I am, I want to see it through. I just want to try to establish a timeline for myself, so I can get the files, some paperwork set up.
But you're saying that there's a point at which you might--
That's all. That's all I'm wanting.
It took us this long to get here.
Okay.
Took us 21 years to make this resolution.
Election coming up, we've got a lot of things happening.
No problem.
Yeah. You're not going anywhere, are you?
No, not at all. But like, I don't think I'm going to be the sitting harbor master when the commission gets in place, so I was just worried you guys are going to be voting on the commission, how fast this is going to move forward, so on, so forth.
I'm pretty sure you're going to be involved.
No problem, no problem, I just want to see what that--
The only thing I would say that is, if, if, if your plan is not to be in the harbor master when the commission is in place, that I would assume that you've started the process of making people aware of that fact, because--
Well, if it's going to be like a year or two, like another couple cycles of mooring permits, I'm just going to stay on, because I know kind of how to handle things. And like, I'm not going to switch it off to someone who doesn't know what's going on, and then switch it to you guys, like, I'll just kind of take--
You can, you can discuss that with the selectmen, I'm sure.
No problem, I just didn't know how long this was going to take. That's all.
It'll be a bit.
No problem, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supa. Thank you. Okay. Town clerk, Arpin, please come forward.
So just a part of procedural process is, once I get the final copy from Peter, it gets sent to the newspaper, there's a legal notice that is required, and then there's a 15-day waiting period for any possible petitions from the public, and then it becomes effective, and then it gets codified into the town code, and then, of course, then it goes to the Board of Selectmen to make their determinations on who's going to be on the board. Thank you.
Lisa.
Thank you.
Representative Henshaw, would you, as part of this process, since we're all, we're educating ourselves and the public, mention again who the stakeholders will be, who will be chosen or to represent on the commission?
Absolutely. So, as I said, the, the commission itself is a nine-member commission, and in the ordinance, one of the lines says, "Seven of the appointments shall be made, seven of the appointments made shall include at a minimum a representative of each of the following Branford stakeholder groups," and those groups are, the first one is marina and boatyard managers, second is commercial maritime business people and fishermen, third is coastal environmental advocates, the fourth is recreational boaters, the fifth is shell fishermen, or fisher people. The--
Thank you.
The, the, the sixth one is island owners, and the seventh one is coastline residents. So those are the, the categories of stakeholders that we hope at a minimum will be included in the nine-member commission. Obviously, there are, there may be other people that consider themselves to be stakeholders that might not fit exactly into these categories. If they make their interest known, they can potentially be included also. We do stipulate that if no stakeholder nominee from any one of the categories above has been received, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint an additional commissioner from the remaining categories. So if we're missing a category, then one of those categories can be doubled up.
Is it seven to nine?
There are nine members, seven of them are from the key stakeholder group--
And then, okay.
Plus another two. That's on page two.
I remember. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Representative Henshaw. Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, other questions or comments from either the RTM or the public before we go to the floor and have a vote? This is a roll call.
Madam Moderator, I just have one question.
Yes.
Through you to Peter. How do people apply for this? So if somebody is listening out there in the town, they're like, oh, that sounds like something I'd be interested in. How do they apply to be on this commission?
That's a good question. The normal process, the simplest process, is that somebody that was interested could write a letter to the first selectman expressing their interest in being appointed and attaching to it some amount of curriculum vitae, you know, saying what their background was and if they fit into any of these categories. In addition, that person could get somebody else, maybe somebody from the RTM, to act to, as a nominee of that person, and add that letter to their letter of interest. We have stipulated also in the process by which the Board of Selectmen make their appointments, that if any member of the public wishes to have the list of nominees made public, they can ask for that. And then the Board of Selectmen have to list all the people that have shown interest in being a member of the commission, just for transparency sake, so that, you know, we could recognize anybody that was interested and make sure that at least the fact that they were interested is known. So that's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I'm just curious, because it's, how do you find people to be on commissions? How do you find people?
That's always a problem with town.
So I think an outreach might be something to.
I mean, certainly, certainly the town can do a variety of outreaches. They go to the sound, post announcements, et cetera, go on the town website. I think the feeling is that this commission, unlike many of our others, may in fact have a lot of interest from people in Branford.
From past meetings, yeah.
So it may not be a problem getting commissioners. It may be a problem weeding out who is actually going to be appointed. But, yeah, I think that, and I would hope that the administration would do a pretty robust communication with the general public about the fact that they were looking for possible members of the commission.
Now, backing up what Lisa had said, there's some timeframe that has to go through a process before these people can apply, or we can even.
The timeframe is for the ordinance itself. She was referring to the timeframe. Any ordinance that we enact has to go through a period, and there's a certain number of weeks by which the public can respond and take, you know, object to the ordinance, et cetera. And after, if that doesn't happen, then I'm sure Peter can give the details about, you know, what happens on that. Peter, do you want to?
Representative Black? Speak into something.
Yes, something.
There's a new sound system.
Aye. Yeah, I mean, the charter stipulates a requirement that first, the town clerk is going to put the ordinance into a newspaper of general circulation to notify the public. After that, anyone, 15 days are allowed for a member of the public that doesn't like the ordinance and wants to prevent its adoption from circulating a petition. I believe it's 15% of the registered voters, which would be 1,500 signatures they'd have to get. It could be 15% of the last election, but it's still a lot. And if they get that number of signatures on a petition within the two weeks, then we have a referendum on the ordinance, and that's in our charter. And Frank probably has his, you don't have your ordinance book right with you.
Nobody has everything else.
You're slipping, Frank.
It's here somewhere.
Okay.
After that, after that process has happened, and assuming nobody comes forward and objects, then what's the timeline for it actually being enacted?
Well, it's effective then.
It's effective at that date?
We didn't put a date, so once that 15 days elapses, so it's probably three or four weeks, because it'll take a while to get it in the paper, right, Lisa? Like a week's lead time?
No, it's in the paper, and it's 15 days after it's in the paper.
Right, but getting it into the paper will take.
I'm putting it in tomorrow, and it'll be print-in print next Thursday.
Oh, okay, we're paying for the, oh, okay, so, like I said, it'll take about a week to get it in the paper. Okay, that's what I was expecting.
Rush again, Mr. Black.
Yeah.
Through you, Madam Moderator, a question to Lisa. How long does it typically take to have the language actually put in the website in terms of what you're looking at, the charter? It's inserted there. That must take a period of time.
So the question was, how long does it take to get the verbiage onto the E-code on the website? So once we finish with the 15-day period and there's no petition, God willing, then I send it to the codification vendor, and they put it in their queue, and it's, it should be within a week, if not two weeks.
Okay, so it's relatively quick.
Yes, but the printed copies for each and every book that you guys have will be down the line a bit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. But the legal notice does say that if there's, if anybody wants to see the copy, it's available in the town clerk's office. And they can contact us and pick up a copy, or we email it. But it's rare that I actually have an inquiry on a legal notice.
Do you need the E-document from me, or do you have that already by virtue of the, what we sent for the agenda today?
That would be great with those small changes, so that it's final and ready to go. I'd appreciate that.
I can do that.
Perfect. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Roll call, vote.
Roll call, vote. Are we ready to go? Okay.
Representative Adams. Representative Edelman.
Yes.
Representative Alphon.
Yes.
Representative Anderson.
Yes.
Representative Black.
Yes.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Yes.
Representative Brooks.
I affirm.
Representative Dayhill. Representative Everson.
Yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Yes.
Representative Henchel.
Yes.
Representative Hines.
Yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Representative Leach. Representative Larson.
Aye.
Representative Mareska.
Yes.
Representative McCall.
Yes.
Representative Papalizio.
Yes.
Representative Schrestla.
Yes.
Representative Toohill.
Yes.
Representative Verderam.
Yes.
Representative Waterman.
Yes.
22 to nothing, Madam Moderator.
It's a touchdown or three. Thank you. We have an approval of this ordinance, and the process will go forward. Congratulations, committee. Okay.
For every mile of shoreline. Branford has the most of any shore.
Yes, it does. All those islands. Mr. Henchel, you're up again. Number eight, to consider and, if appropriate, create an ordinance which will encode reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals in Branford.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The regular meeting of the Rules and Ordinances Committee on June, I'm sorry, in May, heard the final version of this before it went to the town attorney for review and reviewed it in fair detail. We have sent it to the town attorney for review. The working group has made some modifications to the proposed ordinance based on the attorney's, Anisovitch's, comments. And it is our intention to put this on the, the final review by Rules and Ordinances on the agenda for this upcoming June meeting on the 17th. That meeting will be an in-person meeting, so we will meet in person and go over the final proposed draft, hopefully get a RNO approval on that night. The intention is that with the summer recess, we'd probably be actually bringing that to the RTM in the September meeting. The committee voted therefore to re-refer this to the June meeting, and that was even an unanimous vote, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. The motion is to re-refer to the Rules and Ordinances Committee to take it up next meeting. Any questions or comments on this motion? Do we need a second? We need a second.
It's a committee report.
Oh, it's a committee report. Okay, okay. Then we will have a vote, all in favor of re-referral of item eight on short-term rentals to Rules and Ordinances. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries and is re-referred. Thank you. Item nine, to consider and, if appropriate, recommend amending the Town Blight Ordinance, Chapter 124, Blight Prevention, based on recommendations from the Town of Branford's Blight Enforcement Officer. Mr. Henchel.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, Rules and Ordinances met in their regular meeting in May, and at that meeting, that was actually the first meeting that this proposed amendment to the ordinance was discussed. And the working group that's been working on this, in fact, for several months, ran through the basic changes that were being made to the ordinance, things that were being struck out of it and things that were being added to it. That was an initial draft that had not been reviewed at that point by the town attorney. The, as a result of that meeting, the working group has continued to work on one section in particular that Mr. Black seemed to be particularly concerned with, and we've done about as all we can with that at this point, and we'll be sending it tomorrow to the town attorney for his review. My plan is to add this to the agenda that we'll publish tomorrow for the Rules and Ordinances Committee next week, and add in, attach to that, that agenda, the proposed draft that the bill will be reviewing, so that hopefully the June meeting will be the final review by the committee and approval. And again, the intention would be that this then would be referred to the September meeting of the RTM for their final review and approval. And I put that in the form of a motion.
And the motion is to re-refer.
Motion is to re-refer.
Okay, we have a motion to re-refer this item to Rules and Ordinances for their June 17th meeting. Any discussion, questions? All in favor of re-referring this item to Rules and Ordinances, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries and is re-referred to Rules and Ordinances. Okay, item 10, any other business anybody would like to bring to the attention of the Well, then, just a reminder that the Branford Festival is coming up, and we hope everybody takes great advantage of it, and in its new home this year on Hammerfield. And it looks really cool down here with the tents and everything up, so, and it's going to be a great festival, so hope to see you all there. Okay? I have a need for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
A second, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:45.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.